And we're going to proceed with our agenda. Trustee Abrego, will you please convene the Committee on Institutional Advancement?
Thank you, Chair Eisen. And before I call the committee to order, let me quickly thank Garrett for the invitation to meet with the Vice Presidents for Advancement, who recently gathered at the Cal State San Bernardino-Dinopalm Desert campus. At the meeting, the Vice Presidents shared insights into their extensive responsibilities. When I hear advancement, I immediately think of fundraising. That is definitely a major focus of this group. Yet many Vice Presidents for Advancement also spoke about their campus efforts in advocacy, communications, alumni programs, and community partnerships. This group is about building relationships with donors, lawmakers, community leaders, alumni, media, and the broader public. And all these relationships take time and effort, and that's why we dedicate the resources to build and sustain these relationships over many years. And I was very impressed to hear about the success of our campuses under the leadership of the Presidents and Vice Presidents for Advancement, and harnessing those relationships to contribute to the success of our students, faculty, and staff. To conclude, we all recognize the importance of fundraising, but equally the importance of telling the CSU story. I want to let my colleagues on the board know that I took the liberty of volunteering you to join in the university fundraising efforts in telling the CSU story. With that, will the Committee on Institutional Advancement please come to order? I note that no one has requested to address the committee during the public comment period today. The first item on today's agenda is the approval of the minutes from the September 2016 meeting. Are there any objections to the approval of the minutes?
[inaudible]
Hearing none, the minutes are approved. On today's discussion agenda, there are two action items. The first action item is a facility naming request from Cal State Northridge. Vice Chancellor Garrett Ashley will present the request.
Thank you, Trustee Abrego. This item will consider naming the south wing of Manzanita Hall at Cal State Northridge as the Hollywood Foreign Press Association Wing. The naming recognizes the $2 million contribution by the Hollywood Foreign Press Association to the Department of Cinema and Television Arts in the Mike Curb College of Arts, Media, and Communication at CSU Northridge. The gift will be used to establish a scholarship endowment and upgrade equipment and systems in the Department of Cinema and Television Arts. The scholarship endowment will advance undergraduate and graduate opportunities for low-income and historically underrepresented populations in the entertainment industry. I'd now like to turn this over to President Harrison to say a few words.
Thank you. CSUN's Department of Cinema and Television Arts has an international reputation for producing dedicated and talented entertainment industry professionals who recognize the value of hard work as they learn and continue to perfect their crafts. The department currently enrolls approximately 1,550 undergraduate students and 30 students in its graduate screenwriting program. It's alumni work in all aspects of the entertainment media, from writing, editing, producing, and directing, to manning cameras and having the final say in what project is being made. Again this year, The Hollywood Reporter listed CSUN as one of the top film schools in the United States, and Variety listed CSUN as one of the top 40 film programs internationally. The Mike Curb College of Arts, Media, and Communication and its Department of Cinema and Television Arts have benefited from a 20-year relationship with the Hollywood Foreign Press Association, which is an organization of approximately 90 international journalists covering all aspects of the entertainment industry. HFPA's annual support continues and benefits our students through the Hollywood Foreign Press Association Fellows Program grants to support senior film projects. This new gift will be used to establish a scholarship endowment and to upgrade equipment and systems in the Department of Cinema and Television Arts. The scholarship endowment, named the Hollywood Foreign Press Association Scholars Program Fund, will seek to advance undergraduate and graduate opportunities for low-income and traditionally underrepresented populations in the entertainment industry. Part of this program includes an industry mentor for the selected student. In this coming January, the first Hollywood Foreign Press Association Scholar, Amanda Nieto, will be an intern on the group's Golden Globes Annual Awards Show telecast. The gift to upgrade systems will refresh the Hollywood Foreign Press Association Senior Film Edit Suite, HFPA's Film Sound Mix Studio, the ADR Foley Stage, and television studio and control room, and provide for an endowment for technology upgrades into the future. The HFPA's philanthropy continues to have a profound effect on our cinema and television arts programs. They have been a consistent partner, and this increased investment is a testament to the relationship Professor Nate Thomas, who is sitting right over there, and CSUN have developed with the HFPA. HFPA President Lorenzo Soria, Grants Committee members Sylvia Bizzio and Jorge Camara, CFO Greg Gekner, and Grants Officer Sandra Cuneo have been wonderfully engaged partners in this process, and I want to thank each and every one of them for seeing the value of such an amazing investment at CSUN. The naming of the south wing of Manzanita Hall as the Hollywood Foreign Press Association Wing is the first donor recognition of its type at CSUN. It is naming a portion of an existing building that houses the majority of the instructional facilities for the Department of Cinema and Television Arts. Given the cumulative giving by the Hollywood Foreign Press Association and this new gift, this naming is comparable to other building wings in the CSU. Thank you.
Thank you, President Harrison. The naming of the Hollywood Foreign Press Association Wing at California State University Northridge is an action item before the Committee on Institutional Advancement. Only committee members may vote at this time. May I have a motion to approve? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
As someone who has spent a good deal of my life in the cinematic world of young people, I just want to commend Northridge for having outstanding program for many years. I've known many students who've gone through your program. Of course, I know many of your faculty, and the Hollywood Foreign Press has really stepped up over the last several years and been a major part of the philanthropy of the community. So I commend them, and I'm very proud of all that you're doing at Northridge. Well done.
Thank you, Dreen. Any additional comments? If not, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The naming of the Hollywood Foreign Press Association Wing is approved. President Harrison would you... President Harrison, would you please escort the members of the Hollywood Foreign Press Association to the lectern where they will be joined by Chancellor White and Chair Eisen. To name this building if we can fit, no?
It is my privilege to introduce those joining us today from the Hollywood Foreign Press Association, Sylvia Bizzio, a Hollywood Foreign Press Association member and Grants Committee Chair, and Greg Gekner, who's the Chief Operating Officer. We always appreciate the opportunity for naming. This one is a particular source of pride for the California State University as a system and CSUN as the campus in particular. In this naming, we have the privilege of permanently connecting the campus and its tremendous cinema and television arts program that you are also aware of, I'm sorry, with the world's best-known community of outstanding journalists who cover the entertainment industry. And as President Harrison described, your gift will be put to good use educating the next generation of filmmakers, yet at the same time, this is an opportunity to deepen a relationship that will serve as a pipeline for our students and future alumni. So congratulations to you both and to your colleagues. Happy for you to share some remarks.
Thank you. My name is Sylvia Bizzio. I'm a journalist from Italy. I write for La Repubblica, daily newspaper of Italy, a national newspaper about cinema. I've been doing that for over 30 years, and I've been such a proud and excited member of the Hollywood Foreign Press for over 35 years. When Lorenzo Soria, our president, asked me and Jorge Camara to join Sandra Cuneo and our CEO, thank you Greg for being here, to take part in the Grants Committee, it was like a dream because this is the best thing, I think, that we do with the Hollywood Foreign Press. This is the biggest privilege that we get through our Golden Globes program. It's not just awarding movies and television series, and movies, which is so fantastic in itself. It's not just being a lot of us from all over the world writing about cinema and television and bringing it to the world, but it allows us, it grants us the privilege of helping out. And we've been doing that for many years, as you remarked and as you know. This has been a particularly big one, though. It had never happened before that we could grant $2 million to a university. Northridge was the logical choice. We not only have been working with them for 20 years, but as President Harrison was saying, it does have one of the biggest film schools in the United States. It does have one of the best programs in the world. I visited with Greg, with Jorge and Sandra. We visited the department. We saw the students and the technology and the machinery there. We saw the enthusiasm and the passion, and so, I mean, this is incredible for us to have the south wing of Manzanita Hall named after the Hollywood Foreign Press Association. It's a privilege for us, and we're very thankful and grateful, and we will continue working together. So we're very happy, and I express the wishes and, of course, the thanks and the best wishes from the entire membership of the Hollywood Foreign Press Association.
And on behalf of the Board of Trustees, I will be presenting this framed resolution, which has numerous whereas', and I think you got the gist of the comments made by everybody about what those whereas's are about. But it finishes with a resolution by the trustees of California State University that the south wing of Manzanita Hall of California State University Northridge be named the Hollywood Foreign Press Association Wing, signed by the Chair of the Board and myself as Chancellor.
Thank you, Chancellor White. The second action item on today's agenda is an academic naming request from San Diego State University. Vice Chancellor Garrett Ashley will once again present the request. Garrett?
Thank you, Trustee Abrego. This item will consider naming the College of Business Administration at San Diego State as the Fowler College of Business Administration. The proposed naming recognizes the $25 million pledge by Ron L. Fowler to San Diego State, which includes $10 million for the Fowler Scholars Program, $10 million for the Fowler Professorships, $2 million for the Fowler Lectureship Series, $1.5 million for the Fowler International Experience, and $1.5 million for other projects. This is a challenge gift intended to incentivize other matching donations, providing an overall impact of a $50 million endowment. In the past, Mr. Fowler has donated more than $13 million for a variety of campus programs and initiatives, including entrepreneurism, athletics, capital projects, the College of Business, and alumni engagement. With his latest gift, Mr. Fowler is the most generous donor in San Diego State history. And I'll turn this over to President Hirschman to say a few words.
Thank you. Ron Fowler has been an extraordinary supporter of San Diego State. His generosity has strengthened our alumni programs, our athletic programs, and our academic programs. As was mentioned with this current gift, Ron becomes the largest donor in the history of San Diego State. We are deeply grateful for his support, and we're honored to name the Fowler College of Business Administration. Thank you for your support.
Thank you, President Hirschman. Are there any comments or questions? If none, the naming of the Fowler College of Business Administration at San Diego State University is an action item before the Committee on Institutional Advancement. Only committee members may vote at this time. May I have a motion to approve? Is there a second?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The naming of the Fowler College of Business Administration is approved. Chair Eisen. Chair Eisen, that concludes the business of the Institutional Advancement Committee.
Thank you, Trustee Abrego. Trustee Stupanic, will you now please convene the Joint Committees on Educational Policy and Campus Planning, Buildings, and Grounds?
Thank you, Chair Eisen. Will the meeting of the Joint Committees of Educational Policy and Campus Planning, Buildings, and Grounds please come to order? I note that no one has requested to address the committee during the public comment period today. The first item on today's agenda is the approval of the minutes from our last joint meeting, which was held in May 2014. Is there any objection to the approval of the minutes? Not hearing any, the minutes are approved. Now on to the discussion agenda, which only has one item. Item number one is an information item, reporting on the progress towards CSU environmental sustainability goals. This particular item is going to be presented by Executive Vice Chancellor Steve Relyea, Assistant Vice Chancellor Vi San Juan, and campus representatives from both CSU Chico and CSU Northridge. Before we hear the presentation, I'd like to share a few remarks on my recent experience attending the 2016 CSU Facilities Management Conference that was hosted by Capital Planning, Design, and Construction, and attended by staff from all 23 campuses. The theme of this particular event was building a sustainable future, and this was highlighted throughout the program of the conference. But certainly more packets are construction delivery, energy retrofit, facilities operation, student achievement in the physical environment, and sustainability. The poster boards for these particular projects will be on display as part of the CSU Progress in Environmental Sustainability poster session that will commence at the close of today's committee meeting. I appreciate the opportunity to attend the conference and to learn of campus efforts to promote model practices and administrative efficiencies across all areas of facilities management. My interactions during the conference provided greater insight regarding many of the completed and in-progress projects that I've seen during my various campus visits. My thanks goes to Steve and his staff for the invitation to attend, and to Vi and her staff for the excellent job at organizing the event. Steve, would you please begin this presentation?
Thank you, Chair Stupanic, and thank you for your participation in the Facilities Management Conference, which was greatly appreciated by the participants. This is an information item to report our progress on our environmental sustainability goals. We've made good progress in a number of operational areas, and our faculty presenters will provide a campus perspective on sustainable practices and the integration of sustainability into the curriculum. I will now ask Assistant Vice Chancellor Vi San Juan to start with providing information on our progress. Vi?
Thank you, Steve. As Executive Vice Chancellor Steve Relyea noted, we've made good progress in a number of areas with regard to the Board's sustainability policy and the goals set by the Board. In this graph, we show our progress to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. The vertical axis shows the emissions in metric tons of carbon dioxide, and the horizontal axis shows emissions in 1990, and ends on the bar at the right with the goals set by the Board. The 2020 goal is indicated. The 2030 goal is that established by the Governor, and the 2040 goal is that set by the trustees. So the 2040 goal is about 55,000 or so metric tons. In the area of greenhouse gas emissions, in 2014, we've nearly achieved the Board's 2020 goal. And as noted in the five-year plan, we are projecting the CSU will be about 6% below the Board's goal by 2020. The reduction is attributed to the change in the source of energy from the utilities, where they are required to provide 33% of their power from renewable sources, along with anticipated CSU solar power generation and our reduced energy use. This graph captures our overall efforts to continually improve energy efficiency. The graph displays energy use intensity as measured in thousands of British thermal units per square foot in roughly 10-year increments. The first column to the left shows where the system was in '85, '86, and the shorter the bar, the better. So it shows the CSU is doing well to reduce our energy use per square foot for '14, '15. From 2005, '06 to '14, '15, the CSU reduced its energy use intensity by 23%. The campus projects to improve lighting systems, ventilation systems, central heating and cooling systems, and behavioral change all play a part of this ongoing effort. In addition, the state's stringent new construction and energy standards help to ensure continued progress. A number of infrastructure projects funded by the Board in 2014, '15, and 2015, '16 will further our progress once construction is completed. This graph shows our plan to increase our generation of renewable power. Our Solar Phase IV initiative is expected to increase generation capacity and bring us very close to the 80-megawatt generation goal. We're planning to release the RFP to interested solar power providers before the end of the calendar year, and are strategizing on how to best package together the campuses that are interested in participating in the power purchase solicitation. The expectation is to select one or more firms that will finance, design, install, and maintain the power panels over the life of the agreement, which may be 20 years, and for the campus to purchase the power generated from the panels. Currently, 18 campuses, two off-campus centers, and the chancellor's office are interested in solar phase IV. The installations will be a combination of roof-mounted, ground-mounted, and canopy-mounted installations, depending on the campus and particular site. The canopy installations are desirable from a land-use point of view. While panels installed on the roof must meet state far marshall requirements and worker safety requirements, we also have to consider the condition of the roof before we install panels for a 20-year term. So depending on the installation, the cost of the power that the campus would purchase from the third party may or may not be less than what the campus is currently paying, as the power purchase costs will reflect to install canopies in addition to the panels, for example. We hope to have the installations complete by the end of 2018. In the area of water reduction, with the drought and the emphasis on turf removal and fixture replacement, we've made the trustees' 2016 goal and 2020 goal for water reduction. So as far as metrics and system-wide progress, that completes the graphs I wanted to share, and I'm going to turn it over to our campuses to share some of their work that is being done at both Northridge and Chico. President Harrison and Hutchinson will provide insight, and I'll turn it over to President Harrison.
Thank you, Vi. Cal State Northridge recognizes the importance and critical nature of climate change. I've asked Dr. Helen Cox, the Director of our Institute for Sustainability, to share some of the work the university has completed in the last few years in support of the Board's sustainability policy. Under the institute's leadership, CSUN's campus sustainability best practices are shared through a number of programs, including freshman orientation, student housing orientation, the Institute for Sustainability Community Advisory Board, and the Sustainable Office Program, an initiative now managed by associated students that trustee George Reyes Salinas will describe. Dr. Cox's efforts to focus campus attention on climate change and sustainability led to the creation and staffing of the Institute for Sustainability. She then worked with a university-wide committee to create a sustainability minor, a GE path in sustainability principles, and an interdisciplinary studies degree track in sustainability. In 2012, after my arrival at CSUN, I asked Helen to lead the development of a sustainability campus master plan. The sustainability plan engaged all university divisions and has impacted all areas of campus administration, operation, and education. The plan's cross-cutting efforts also extend beyond the campus, as we are working with several local jurisdictions, community organizations, K-12, and community college partners on topics such as climate action planning, mitigation, water conservation, resilience, and adaptation. In the last month, CSUN was the recipient of two national awards for leadership and sustainability, one from EcoAmerica and Haku, and one from the American Association of State Colleges and Universities, or ASQ. Dr. Cox's leadership and coalition-building skills have been essential in carrying out the Board's sustainability policy, and as a result of her efforts, she was recognized this summer as CSU's 2016 Sustainability Champion. Helen?
Thank you, President Harrison. I'm happy to provide the Board insight into the work of CSU Northridge to support the Board's goal to further the university's environmental stewardship. The first program that I'd like to share with you is our work on training teachers in sustainability. We've received funding from the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power for the second year in a row to engage the community in energy and water conservation. And this year, that funding will be utilized specifically to train teachers from 18 different K-12 schools on the integration of these topics into their curriculum, using grade-appropriate activities and in accordance with the new Next Generation Science Standards. Teachers attend full-day workshops at CSUN on using devices to measure the electricity consumption of household devices, model renewable energy systems using science kits, and monitor water flow rates from showers and faucets. In addition, they will take their classes on field trips to NASA's Jet Propulsion Lab, Discovery Cube L, and the Los Angeles Clean Tech Incubator. The goal is for teachers to reach over 3,000 students and their families with a better understanding on the importance of energy and water conservation and the tools to achieve The second item that I'd like to share with you is our work to transform our communities by educating our students through real-world, practical experience while engaging our communities in ways to mitigate and adapt to climate change. One of our projects is a tree planting effort in an LAUSD school located in a disadvantaged area. Over a period of 10 weeks, we've worked with our students and the local community to design, develop, and implement... design, develop, and implement a large-scale shade tree planting in an area previously devoid of trees. This work has included mapping using geographic information systems, or GIS, tree research and selection, irrigation design, and much hands-on work trenching, plumbing, planting, and community organization. The last item I wanted to share with you is some of our campus work on climate and resilience planning. Last year, we developed our climate action plan with a goal of reaching zero emissions by 2040. This chart shows the steps we will take to reach that goal with a timeline shown on the horizontal axis and the CO2 emissions on the vertical axis here. The black line at the top, the solid black line there, shows our business-as-usual projection. So it shows where we've been so far since 1990 and then projections into the future as far as 2050. This line takes into account the cleaning up of the utilities' power mix in accordance with the state mandate that requires California Utilities to generate 33% of their power from renewables by 2020 and 50% of their power from renewables by 2030. The green area at the bottom shows our plan for reducing emissions to zero by 2040. In order to reach this goal, over two dozen different energy conservation and efficiency measures were included in reaching this target. A few of them are just shown by different colors in this diagram. We haven't attempted to show all of them here. But as you can see from the graph, the bulk of the reduction will need to come from large-scale solar installations, and that's shown by the yellow area. This will, of course, depend on the availability of funding. As far as resilience planning, we've received funding from the Kresge Foundation in partnership with Second Nature, which is the national organization responsible for the president's climate commitment, to develop a set of campus-community resilient strategies jointly with one of our community colleges and also with our neighborhood councils and our local planning division. These will include using the campus as a living lab for piloting new applied technologies and sharing these with our community. I'll now ask our CSU Northridge graduate student and CSU student trustee, George Reyes Salinas, to share the student work in university sustainability practices.
Thank you, Dr. Cox. I'm pleased to report on the CSUN Sustainable Office Program awarded the 2016 CSU Best Practice Award in the student achievement in the physical environment. This program is supported by the Associated Students and enables students to visit campus departments and perform an assessment of current practices in order to identify improvements that can be made to reduce waste, water, and energy. Each of these improvements not only save dollars but helps the campus use resources wisely. The Associated Students Sustainable Office Program evaluates offices and ranks the improvements that various offices have after the initial assessment. They award bronze, silver, gold, or platinum. These ratings that are then displayed on office windows. The competition drives improvements in reduction of waste, water, and energy used through education and awareness. The Best Practice Award recognized the best leveraging of students for outreach to the campus community. As the key student contributors were not able to attend today due to class commitments, I'm happy to represent them and share their story. The key student contributors included Carlos Chavez Iglesias, Sanda Delgado, Basil Jimenez, Kristen Williams, and Anna Livia Gomez. The project was student-driven. The program started in a sustainability course and was then adopted by the Associated Students Recycling Team. The project promoted "Learn by Doing Experience." The students were trained in energy and water assessment and sustainability practices through workshops they organized and sustainability classes. The students received great experience in interviewing and communications while meeting and assessing campus departments. The project demonstrated efforts to educate, communicate, and inform the campus community. The program seeks to inspire every student, staff, and faculty member to be conscious of their decision in regards to the environment. People have the power to implement changes in their own lives, and students have sparked passion in even the most unsuspecting staff and faculty. Thank you to the Board and the President Harrison for allowing us to share our student success. I will turn the presentation back to Assistant Vice Chancellor Vi San Juan.
Thank you, trustee Reyes Salinas, Dr. Cox, and President Harrison. I now ask President Hutchinson to share CSU Chico's progress on sustainable practices.
Thank you, Vi. I'm honored that our efforts on sustainability were selected for presentation today, and it is my pleasure to introduce Dr. Colleen Hatfield, who has been professor in the Department of Biological Sciences at Chico State for 11 years. Dr. Hatfield is the Rollins-endowed Professor for Environmental Literacy with a mission to foster student awareness of the challenges and complexities that we face in today's world. She teaches courses within biology and is actively involved in general education. She was instrumental in the development of the Sustainability Pathway, one of eight themed pathways in our GE curriculum. She currently has a grant to integrate curriculum across this particular pathway. Dr. Hatfield works very closely with the Institute for Sustainability at Chico State, developing curriculum and outreach programs to foster student engagement, examples of which will be presented to you today. Her research interests and expertise lie at the intersection of the built environment, landscape patterns, and implications for environmental health. Dr. Hatfield has worked on regulatory and conservation issues with fellow academics, agencies, and conservation organizations at the local, regional, and national level. It's my pleasure to introduce Colleen. Colleen?
Thank you, President Hutchinson, and to the Board for your support and interest in university sustainability practices. Today, I'd like to share our work to develop curriculum in sustainability as part of the CSU's Campus as a Living Lab Initiative. At CSU Chico, the CALL program has allowed the building of a program that interfaces with the facility side of the campus and the academic side. The Institution for Sustainability Development has been critical in building the bridge by reaching out to the facilities to meter buildings and professors and classes to integrate university energy demands into the classroom curriculum. The program has provided a venue to heighten students' awareness of the challenges of trying to manage energy demands towards a path to sustainability. Courses within the GE Sustainability Pathway were targeted for this effort. The utility management software that we've used in the metering has included in the analytics that are readily accessible to the students. Over the course of three different CALL funding rounds, we've been able to put meters on 12 total buildings on campus. In the first round, on the left here, we were able to meter four academic buildings. Notice that there are two newer buildings and two older buildings. And we engaged the facilities management with this one. Can we go back? No, thank you. In the second round, we reached out to housing and we brought on four different residence halls. And in the third round, we expanded the residence halls, brought in the new student recreation facility, and then the LEED-certified building of the SSC Student Services Administration Building. Each of these buildings were metered, and the metering is online and real-time data that students have access to. The GE curriculum at Chico State is organized into pathways such that students can select amongst eight different focused programs. The Sustainability Pathway is one of these programs. We have used the CALL effort to better integrate across the curriculum and to engage the students. We've had six different classes in these different CALL projects, spanning all the way from a foundations course up to a capstone upper-division class. It's important to recognize the number of people who've engaged in this partnership. I draw your attention to the facilities partners in particular. We've engaged the facilities management in the first round. In the second round, we brought on university housing. And in the third round, we expanded with facilities, housing, and with the Associated Students Recreation Center. I'd also like to highlight a different program, a second program that we've had on the CSU Chico campus. This is the Initiative for Resilient Cities that was launched in the spring of 2016 by the Institute for Sustainable Development. Expanding on a longstanding relationship between the university and the city, the Institute for Sustainable Development partnered with the City of Chico for this project and signed a three-years Master Services Agreement after the city council approved the project seven to zero. The project offered the opportunity for faculty and students with a sustainability and resilience focus to engage in public sphere applied learning activities that in turn provided an impactful delivery to partner agencies. This initiative is also part of the Educational Partnership for Innovative Communities, or the EPIC, which is a national program that was established to help support best practices and support efforts across the nation. There are currently 25 universities that are engaged in this effort. The South Campus Neighborhood is the focus for this initiative. And the reason for this particular area is that it is right next to the campus, so it's a 42-square-block neighborhood. It's adjacent to the campus, so it houses a large number of our students, providing housing for them. It also is the oldest neighborhood in Chico, established in 1876, so it has a very long history. In the spring of 2016, we initiated Phase I, which is an existing conditions report. In the course of conducting this existing conditions report, we had nine different classes in eight departments spanning four colleges that were engaged in this project. The city received the Phase I, or will receive the Phase I, report this fall. Phase II is scheduled to be launched in the spring. That's going to look at the overhaul Neighborhood Improvement Program. Also, this initiative was awarded at the CHESS 2016 Best Practices Award for Innovation and Sustainability. So here we have the different elements that are part of the existing conditions report. On the left, we have the elements that are identified in blue. The agencies, the different agencies within the city are identified here in green, all of which coordinated with the Institute for Sustainable Development to identify and define these areas. Then the ISG of the Institute for Sustainable Development reached out to and identified different classes within the campus and brought in the faculty, who welcomed the opportunity to provide an application-based service learning opportunity that this would provide for their students. The Phase I report is still being pulled together, but a lot of the classes provided actually year-end reports in different venues throughout the campus. So this has already started to come together as an impactful event. So we invite you to see these two posters that are on display out in the lobby that gives you more detail about each of these projects and the impact that they've had. Collectively across these projects, we've probably had over 600 students that have had some sort of engagement, and we're only at the very beginning of these two projects. So that completes the report that we have for progress at CSU Chico and how we've integrated sustainability in the program. I thank you for your time, the Board. I thank you for your interest in sustainability. I thank you, Chancellor White, and I'll turn it back to Vi.
Thank you, Colleen. Thank you to all of our presidents. The campuses, I think, have made terrific progress in sustainable practices, not only at hiring staff in a very difficult time, but trying to afford retrofit measures out of their existing budgets to promote conservation. My thanks also to our colleagues in Academic Affairs and the Systemwide Academic Senate for their assistance with the Campus as a Living Lab Initiative. So a number of the posters will display some of the work of other campuses that we're not able to present here but are in the poster session. And a number of my staff will also be in the room if you have questions about some of our initiatives, both in this building and the chancellor's office, as well as across the system. So happy to answer any questions of any of our guests. Thank you.
Thank you, Vi. I wish to extend my thanks to actually all the speakers on this particular topic. The campus progress is very positive and supports the overall goals of the Board. I do appreciate the support that all of the presidents have provided in terms of the university's sustainability practices. This is an informational item. Are there any questions or comments from board members? Chair Eisen?
Well, I was going to say a bit about sustainability and this report in my board chair report, but there's no time like the present. So I want to start by thanking, I mean, if we still can say it takes a village, in this case, it takes an entire university to accomplish an amazing, an amazing set of results. I think for those who are relatively new to the Board, it's helpful to know that we passed, the Board passed, the Sustainability Policy in May 2014. And at that meeting, we had one of our other trustees with us, Governor Brown. And he was hugely high on our sustainability policy. And then we had Lieutenant Governor Newsom similarly endorse it. And the sustainability policy was much like others had been, but had some unique characteristics to it. Three parts. One was the energy conservation, which Vi has reported so well in terms of how we're doing against our goals. The second was to infuse sustainability principles into our curriculum. And I can see that we are doing that on so many campuses in so many ways, and it is vital, of course, because our students are the bearers of this great responsibility going forward. And the more they know and the more they understand of the criticality of it, you know, the better off the entire planet's going to be. The third piece of it was to ask that our vendors commit to us that they are similarly devoted to sustainability principles. And I understand that we now have contract language that essentially does that. I tell you, as a lawyer, a former lawyer, I'm anxious to see that language myself. I just can't resist. But the other thing that I wanted to say, obviously, Chico and Northridge have been doing some incredible things. I mean, truly incredible things. But I have now been to 22 of the 23 campuses, and they are doing incredible things on every campus. I mean, it will blow your mind when you get to a campus to find out what the students are doing, what the faculty is doing, what the staff is doing. Every day, students, faculty, and staff are trying to think of new ways to move this forward. I don't think I can get through this without saying, we just elected to the highest office in the land, a climate denier. It is now on us, you know, and I read that the Paris Accords cannot really be accomplished except by virtue of the actions of California. California is huge in terms of moving this ball forward. We are a huge part of California. So it is now on us to try to make this happen. And I know that the students are protesting regularly now because of this election, and I commend them for doing so. I was a regular protester when I was in college, and it made a difference. But this aspect of the election, the fact that we now are going to have to take climate change and sustainability principles and move them forward ourselves, that is another very good reason to be protesting and to making sure voices are heard on this point. I could probably go on and on, as you know. But I did bring my New York Times article with me, "A Steep Price for Bottled Water." You know, at my last board chair report, we had something called Quiz Bowl. In fact, several people came up to me afterwards and said, "Can we have Quiz Bowl every time?" Okay, here's my Quiz Bowl question for you for today. How many times as much energy does it take to create a bottle of water than a glass of water? I have 100. Do I hear 1,000? Do I hear 2,000 times as much energy to create a bottle of water than a glass of water? Here it is in the New York Times, the Science Times. So we are constantly challenged to keep this information in front of us and move on it. And I thank all of the people in this room who are doing that every day. It just could not be more important. And let's all go see the displays when we're done here.
Trustee Farrar? Did you have? Oh, you didn't. Anybody else with questions or comments? Well, in that case, for Chair Eisen, I'm definitely going to reiterate that there is a much wider selection of the activities that the campuses are doing that are on display in the poster room. And from my visits also, actually, every single campus deserves credit for a lot of their activities in the sustainability arena. So I hope to see you all in the poster session. Once again, it's going to be in the Wallace Room right after this meeting. And with that, Chair Eisen. And with that, Chair Eisen, that concludes the business of the Joint Committees on Educational Policy and Campus Planning, Buildings, and Grounds.
Thank you, trustees. Sapanic, we will convene again tomorrow morning in closed session at 8:00, and then at approximately 8:45, we will start again an open session with the Committee on Collective Bargaining. I know that we had thought that might be later in the day, but for those who wish to be a part of the Committee on Collective Bargaining, that's probably going to be around 8:45 a.m. Thank you, and we'll see you at the poster event.
Thank you, Vi.
Thank you.
No.
I know, it was great.